Okay, looks like it's a little after 5:00. We can begin our city council work session for Tuesday, November 20, 2018. And the first topic is an update on Emerald Ash Bore efforts, including discussion of possible chemical treatment of ash trees defined as marginal in health by the city's recent tree survey. Julie, are you going to come up and speak first, right? That's what we're going to do.
So, good evening, everyone. Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Recreation Director. And along with me tonight is Raylin Shepers. She's our Senior Maintenance Worker in the Forestry Division.
Sorry, could you state her name again, please?
Raylin Shepers.
Just wanted to be sure.
Yeah. We let Zach take a vacation to Colorado, so he's off doing his family thing this week. You get the two of us instead. As you said, we're here to update you on what we've found out and what we've done since the meeting in September when we last talked about Emerald Ash Bore. Just a reminder, Emerald Ash Bore is an infestation of ash trees. At that time, we had identified about 3,000 ash trees throughout the city. We'll talk about that a little bit more. And I have to tell you that it is a changing topic almost every day still. And the information that we found out since then has even changed some of our -- what we've identified in the tree species. So, I'm going to walk you through some of that, talk about what we've been doing and what plans are for the different treatments, and get your feedback on any additional treatment that you'd like to see. But first, a little funny. As you know, we always need more staff. I always want more staff in Parks and Recreation. We got a little extra help on our Emerald Ash Bore efforts. We got -- see if I can get in here. We have an Emerald Ash beaver at work in City Park.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, this happened right after the flooding. So, the beavers are alive and well throughout the park. This time, they happened to take the tree that we had hoped they might take eventually was one of the ash trees.
Sheer luck.
Yeah, sheer luck, they got the right one. They must have known what they were doing. Anyway, some of the updates. We talked about last time about getting a Tree Committee established. That committee has been established and has had their first meeting. They are a subgroup of the Parks and Recreation Commission. There's two commission members on the committee right now, so that is Lucy Lorian and Susan Bentley, along with Raylin from our staff, Zach from our staff, Mark Vatash, who is the DNR's District Forester. And we hope to add representatives from both planning and from the engineering or public work staff as well. Lucy will likely be going off commission at the end of this term, but I think she'd like to stay on this committee as a citizen member at that point, and a different Parks Commission member would be added to the group. So, the commission was charged with the following things. First of all, monitor the implementation of the urban tree management plan. We talked very briefly about this. This is an outgrowth of the tree inventory that we had done 18 months ago. Final draft, that was what they did at their first committee meeting, was go through that plan and come up with final edits to get back to our consultants. So, we're on track to have that completed by the end of the year. And along with that, that's when we've talked about having the tree inventory data more available to the public on the website. So, that's in the works. They will also be monitoring the work of the Forestry Division, their plans, helping with the education and outreach efforts. And the other thing they really talked about at their first meeting was upcoming Arbor Day next spring. They're looking at a much larger celebration than we've had with 30 to 40 tree plantings involving, I believe, two, maybe three, schools. In the past, we only had one small school involved. So, that's much in the works. Any questions about the Tree Committee? Their plans are to meet quarterly and report back regularly to the Parks and Rec Commission. Secondly, after the last meeting, we said we would go out and do more of an inventory in certain neighborhoods of the ash trees. So, specifically, we only had about a week after that meeting in September. It's hard to remember back then, but the trees were still growing when we met, and we had about one more week until they started to drop their leaves. And then a windstorm came and took even more of the leaves down. So, in that week, we had a committee of three people that went out and looked at the ash trees in this particular neighborhood, which is bordered by Burlington on the south, Brown Street on the north, Governor on the east, and Dubuque on the west. And the three members were Zach, Park Superintendent, Raylin with our Senior Maintenance Worker in Forestry, and then Mark Vatash from the DNR went out. And they hand looked at all of the identified ash trees in the right-of-way. So, of those, they identified 268 ash trees in this area. And why they chose this area is we know that this is one of the largest concentrations of mature ash street trees. They provide a significant portion of the tree canopy along these streets. We believe that was the direction to look at those first. So, 268 ash identified, and then 140 of those identified as possible trees for treatment. And I know that last time, we talked quite a bit about percentage and different things of what does it mean which trees should be treated, which trees would not. After going out in this particular area with all these mature ash trees, that three-person committee got pretty generous on which trees should be treated. In other words, the 140 are the trees that have been judged at either excellent, good, or fair, but essentially, they just didn't show any major structural damage or damage that would look -- that would put them on the list for removal immediately. And that's what I'm talking about. This has even changed since we last talked to you in September. The trees are failing much more quickly than we thought they were in September, and we really feel like of those 268 trees, 140 are likely viable, and the rest of them probably present some safety hazards and need to come out sooner rather than later. So, they're recommending that in this particular neighborhood, 140 of the ash trees would be treated next spring. You might say, "Well, why didn't we treat them immediately last fall?" The way that you treat Emerald Ash Bore, the chemicals go into the roots of the tree. So, in order to be successful, it has to happen at a time when the tree is actively growing. And as they're going to sleep in the fall, that's not the case. So, we really do have to wait until spring when they've not only butted out, but started to grow leaves, which will probably be end of April and probably mid-May, depending on what the spring looks like. So, come spring, we'll actually have to go back out and reevaluate these 140 trees one more time to make sure that none of them have degraded more over the winter, and then we would start treatment on those. We're in the process of a bid process now to choose a contractor to be able to do that. And then we're estimating about $50,000. And that's not just for this neighborhood. This is just our example neighborhood to show you at this point. We're still pretty confident in that number of about 400 to 500 trees that are candidates for treatment. And we'll go through those maps in just a second. But that would be the significant street trees in neighborhoods that have a high concentration of the ash trees as street trees and that are of that significant size. So, I'm going to stop for questions at this point.
How are you defining marginal in terms of percentage of canopy that's showing signs of stress?
Yeah, we're saying if the tree looks like it's a danger and a hazard and is going to fall down, then it's not marginal, it needs to come down. So, we've gotten away from the actual percentages, as we had talked about before. Because they're degrading so fast, we're just saying it's either they're candidates for treatment or they're not, based on is it a public safety hazard or is it not? So, you have it still listed here as good and fair because that's the criteria listed in the tree inventory, but the visual walkthrough of all those trees really just said one or the other.
How does that compare with what other communities in Iowa have done in terms of identifying percentage of tree canopy that's lost in terms of identifying treatment? Have you done a comparative in terms of how other communities are doing that?
They're all getting to the point that we're getting to right now, and they're feeling like our criteria is actually pretty generous towards the treatment option versus removal. What we were talking about a few months ago of being able to judge percentages and whatnot is changing so fast that I'm not sure it's such a valid argument or a valid discussion any longer.
Out of the 140 ash trees that identified as a candidate for treatment, you said two excellent condition, 59 good and 79 fair. How do you define the two excellent? If they are excellent, why they are in the 140?
Okay, so, the way we define -- so, the two, the 59, and the 79 is how these trees were judged on the tree inventory, which was the snapshot taken about 18 months ago. The marginal and treatable versus not is what was judged on the walkthrough inventory. So, you're getting two different judges of it there. The tree inventory, which the information is a little bit older, had it broken down into three different categories. As we -- as our staff and our DNR person went out, they just simply said, "Is this tree a safety hazard that needs to come down? If not, let's try to treat it."
Julie, does that include the larger ash? Is that not -- were they also part of this inventory or are they outside the inventory?
I believe so. I'm going to look to Raylin. Did we stop at a certain large size?
Every ash.
It was every ash.
Okay.
Yeah. There is some evidence, as you -- I think you're referring to that the largest of the large ash trees may not be as successful with treatment. Right now, we're saying, "Let's try."
Yeah, you had mentioned at the last presentation, Grand Rapids, and that they don't. So, I'm good to hear the clarification.
Julie, could you repeat the four boundary streets for this diagram?
Sure. The east side is Governor, the west side is Dubuque, the north side is Brown, and the south side is Burlington. And there's no magic to that, other than we just said that's a neighborhood with a high percentage of these really large, big ash trees on the -- and that's really about all we could get to in that week that we had. Had we had more time, we would have branched out into other neighborhoods around. We think this is pretty indicative of what other neighborhoods will look like, so we're basing our numbers kind of on this, on the streets. Let me take you through some of the maps from before to just explain some of the differences here. So, if you remember, this map, we have all the green dots are the significant ash trees. And I wouldn't get too hung up on the word significant or not. It's basically the ash tree, I think, that was larger than six inches. So, it's just a ceiling or a small tree. It didn't show up in the inventory either, so those are too small for that. Then after the significant, we had listed at the time all of these marginal health ash trees. And you can see that if you go from the green one to the yellow, it's pretty similar. And you might say, "Well, how did we get from marginal to the ones that we're recommending for treatment?" If you look at this marginal map, you notice that there's a lot of them congregated like along the river, on the peninsula, in wooded areas or park areas. We are recommending treatment of those. We are focused, as you asked us, to be on the street trees in neighborhoods that are predominantly lined by the ash trees. So, that gets us closer to this potential ash tree. These are primarily trees that are on the right-of-way. There are a few in the parks. If they're in a park, it's because of a significant size, good condition, or it's one that we've specifically planted for landscaping reason, and we'd like to try to save it in that location. But most of them that you'll find along our trails or along the rivers, we're saying, "Let's just let nature do with it," as they would in those. Because they're also in a more diverse canopy in those places, it's not like along the right-of-way where it's oftentimes just the ash tree in some of these neighborhoods.
In terms of identifying the dangerous trees, what are the criteria that are used to determine whether it's dangerous or not?
Does the trunk or the primary branches show evidence that they have either significant damage from before or early infestation damage that makes them susceptible in the next windstorm or the next large storm? That's kind of a really basic answer for you. They look for evidence that they may be damaged or ringed by some other, like either lawn mowers or some other construction, or the root system hasn't taken enough hold that it's got significant structural deficiencies in the first place. Yeah.
So, city -- so, if I understand this, then citywide, if a tree falls into the excellent, good, or fair classification, they will be treated?
We hope to get to the point where if it's a street tree and it's not showing signs of serious infestation or structural damage, we think that we can accommodate those in that 400 to 500 number and treat most of those. I'm not going to say all, because I don't know what we're going to find next spring, and I don't know how much our contractor's going to be able to get done in one spring. But our priorities would be the larger tree-lined streets with ash trees, the high-density areas where that is a significant effect on the tree cover or the street tree cover, and then moving outward from there. So, if it's a tree -- if it's a street with two ash trees and 26 other varieties, we may not get there and treat those, just because there's so many other diverse species around them. But we'll do our best. Some other numbers you asked for in the last presentation, just an update on our tree plantings and removals from this year. So, 325 trees planted in 2018. The 92 and 53 for the spring and fall numbers were largely infill trees for ash removals and other reasons along the streetways. And then we had 140 trees planted this fall out along Camp Cardinal, and then 40 along Lower West Branch. Why not as many along Lower West Branch? It's still county land on the north side, so we didn't have as much planting area there. We removed 175 trees in 2018, and so far, 125 of those were ash trees, either removed due to storm damage or infestation. In 2019, we have over 220 planned for planting at this time. So, we continue to hopefully stay ahead by planting more than we are taking out. And then the final thing, you asked us to come back with a little bit more information about notification and replacement. If you remember when we talked in September, we talked that we typically only contact the property owner, and sometimes confusion comes because it's a renter in the unit and the tree is removed, and they didn't know it was going to be removed. So, we have changed that, so that we are now sending letters out directly to the address of the house, so it gets to the tenant. We are also looking at green signage that will go on any tree ahead in advance of it being removed. So, anyone in the public walking by will see this sign. It'll say, "This tree scheduled for removal due to ash bore or whatever," and some information on where to call or where to get more information. That would not be the case, obviously, if it's storm damage and it's going to come down quickly, but anytime we know in advance, we would do that. We would continue with all our other efforts to talk with the property owners about their options for replacement trees, and try to give them a good idea of the timeline of when the replacement will come. It's not always possible based on weather and other things, but we try to give them a good idea, when to expect a new tree to be placed back there. And then finally, for the trees that will be treated, they will get a little silver medallion. Is it stapled onto it, Raylin? Or, yeah?
Yeah. It's like what Coravel.
Yeah. It's the same thing that Coravel and North Liberty are doing, so you'll see that throughout the region for trees that have received treatment. So, residents will know what's been treated, what's not, and then also see these other signs, when a tree's going to come down. So, that's the end of my presentation, if I can.
So, Julie, aren't city pesticide policy has to be changed to accommodate this? Is that correct?
Correct. If we treat in the parks.
If we treat in the parks.
Right.
Okay. Has there been any plan or thought in terms of more education of property owners if they want to treat trees? One of my concerns is in some of the earlier reading that we had, it might have been some of the stuff that you shared, John, was, quite frankly, the concern of individual property owners treating and using the dumping it on the soil approach versus the injection approach, just because of the environmental impact. I don't know what your thoughts are or what we can or can't.
Yeah, I mean, we will continue to do outreach, and that's one of the things the Tree Committee has talked about, is getting more information out for homeowners that want to make a decision about that. We can certainly recommend that they do it by injection. I don't know that we have the ability to monitor all of them.
Right, sure. No, I understand that. It's just making -- trying to help people understand that while it might be cheaper, it also, from what I read, seems like it's not as good environmentally, the potential for damage to other plants, as well as bees and that sort of stuff, so.
There's a lot of numbers floating around here. So, essentially, the theme is the ash trees are declining very quickly. We're working on treating as many as possible, but even that number's declining as each, you know, as time passes, so.
Because of those numbers, can we get the PowerPoint put in the next info packet, please? It'd be helpful, just to have as a record.
Good idea.
It's a good idea.
So, I don't really have a bunch of numbers I want to throw around, Julie, but I do want to sort of narrate a story that is probably similar to what several other homeowners have experienced. And when I say this, I'm not going to be speaking critically, I just want to kind of observe how things can unfold. And before I say it, I want to indicate how much I admire what Raylin has been doing over the years in her work with the Guardar Trees. We had a great conversation a few years ago, I can't remember exactly when. So, bravo to you, Raylin. Thank you. But here's my short story. A few days ago, you know, I live on Ronald Street, so a few -- two or three days ago, I heard a lot of what sounded like trucks coming up and then trees being cut down. And it turned out that four trees were cut down within three houses of where I live, maybe four houses. So, all right, I figure they're ash trees. I don't know that that's true, but I figure they are. And then I talked with my wife about it, and she asked me, "Well, I wonder if the owners were notified?" I said, "Well, I think so. That's our standard policy, but I don't know that, as a matter of fact." And then beyond that, I -- yeah, so, so there's this surprise that the trees are being cut down. So, I don't think I saw any notification in front, like you mentioned signs.
We haven't started that yet.
Hasn't started yet.
That's our plan, almost immediately. We work on it.
All right, so it's just like confusion from an ordinary resident's point of view, is what I'm trying to say, even though I know a lot about the background. And then beyond that, and this has what I'm going to say now, has nothing to do with cutting trees down. I've also noticed new trees being -- having been planted, mainly on somewhere on South Lucas Street, or I guess it's North Lucas, but south where I live. And I'm sure there are others in the neighborhood, which I haven't -- I have not observed, but they're there. So, it's just kind of hard for an ordinary resident to really know what's really going on and to be surprised, I guess, when they see trees being cut down and not really knowing what this entails. It's just like I was just talking to somebody about an hour ago, and this person said, "Ah, what are you going to do? You're all going to cut all these trees down?" I said, "No, we're not going to do that, and we're going to do what you just described."
I think it's hard to get the word out. We've been trying, and this has been devastating, just like Dutch Elm disease was. We know that these trees are an important part of each neighborhood. As I mentioned, the last time we met, even our staff, I mean, nobody likes to take these big trees down. It's sad. We think that actually getting signage on each particular tree will help for the casual person that doesn't, you know, we, like you say, we spend a lot of time talking with the individual property owners, but that will help with general public information, so they see that it's coming and can get more information in those cases. Because we understand it's traumatic when these big trees come down. Yeah.
So, will we be able -- so, in spring, there'll be a verification. And at that point, you know, as Jim was saying, I think everyone who's interested in this issue would like to know which trees have been identified for treatment and which ones have not been selected for treatment, so that that anxiety would be addressed. So, will there be then, at that point, a notification, perhaps by property owner, of what's going on?
I would assume it's going to move pretty quickly in the spring, because we'll have a very short window to actually do the treatment. So, we will need to do better public information ahead of time, so people know, you know, here's what to look for. As we said, we'll mark every tree that gets treated, but right now, I don't know that we're planning on letting a homeowner know that before we do the treatment. I think the treatment would happen, and then it would be marked, and we could potentially let them know afterwards. I suspect this is probably three- or four-week window, maybe a little longer, of when the treatment can happen. So, once we get a contractor on board, we're going to want to, you know, let them go and get this. We can certainly.
So, those that are to be treated will be marked, and those that are -- people understand which trees are ash.
Yeah.
Those that are not marked.
Right.
Julie, I'm sorry, but I think either I didn't understand it, or maybe I didn't pay attention. You know, the 268, those are trees that you -- how many trees that you have on the area that you highlighted, right?
Right.
140 of them need treatment?
140 of them, we recommend that we can treat or try to treat.
And you mean?
So, 128 will need to be removed and replanted.
And the 128, oh, I saw the opposite. I saw the 128 is in good condition and 140.
I wish. Well, 140 is better than the 128.
Oh, okay.
So, it's going to still be significant numbers coming out.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you see those 128 needing to come out next summer? I mean, are they to that point, from a safety standpoint? And I realize you've got a recess in the spring, but.
I doubt we could get them all out in one summer, even if we tried. So, I think we'll have to prioritize, and it'll probably -- they will not happen immediately. It will happen over a couple of years, unless, you know, Mother Nature helps us out in some way in that case, so, yeah.
That was going to be my question, when those 128, and over what period of time you're planning to have them removed?
So, for private residents that, you know, have ash trees on their property, I understand that you'll be given educational material. What does that look like to a regular homeowner?
Yeah, there's actually quite a bit of educational information on the website, both some on our website, but the state DNR has quite a bit. And there's a number of private tree companies that are more than happy to come out and look at an ash tree and help decide whether it's, you know, available for treatment or if it should be taken out. And I think that's what I would recommend homeowners do. We can really only see the ones on the street and get to those, but there are many more in private property.
And if they don't treat them, how does that affect other trees around them, ash trees around them?
It probably doesn't at this point. That's a little bit up for debate. It used to be that we thought we would try to treat a number of them to keep the ash bore from infesting the tree, and it would move on to the next area. That may or may not be the case. So, I think you just look at it as saving the one individual tree, unless, John, unless you have other information on that particular part of the treatment.
To do, I'm sorry.
Does it matter if a homeowner chooses to treat their trees or not, does it affect the mortality of the other trees around them?
I don't think so. I think it's you either treat. If you treat, I think it's something like 99% assured with certain treatments. There are many out there, but there are some that are very effective, and they will preserve that tree. If you do not treat, you can be assured your tree will die.
And so, how often are we looking to treat in the trees, just out of curiosity?
From what this, the one that appears to be the most effective, on the label says every other year. Research is saying that it may actually be effective for three years. So, my feeling is, is we -- you know, I'm happy to see that, you know, the decision was made to treat the fair and good-conditioned trees. Advises time, so maybe in two years, the researchers and even the manufacturers of the chemicals will say, "Yeah, it actually works for three years," and change the label. But for now, there's some question, you know, do we treat every other year or every three years? But at least two years. Any other questions for Julie? I do. You mentioned the Tree Committee being established. I'm really happy to hear about that. It sounds great. And you also mentioned that they will monitor the implementation of the urban tree management plan. I think I've seen a draft of that plan, but I don't think the rest of the council has. And I certainly look forward to having it fully shared, so that we all have a sense of what the vision is for managing our forest and trees and the tree canopy and all that kind of thing. So, did I hear you correctly? No, I don't want to put words in your mouth. When are we likely to see or receive the forest management plan?
Probably, so the final edits have been, I believe, sent back to the consultant, or they will be in the next day or two. So, probably by the end of the year, we'll have kind of, we'll have the final draft for you to look at. So, we'll give them two or three weeks to turn it around, once we get those final edits back. So, you should be seeing it soon.
And is it likely that that great online inventory or the computerized digital inventory of trees will be available for people to look at and check individual trees? Because I know.
That's our hope, by the end of the year as well. Maybe not with full functionality that staff sees of it, but definitely to be able to see the information about each of the trees, so.
It's pretty fascinating information. Maybe you can give us a sense of what one can learn. Maybe you can give us a sense of what one can learn by clicking a tree.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I meant, when you click a tree, you can learn if it's an oak or a hickory or whatever, and you can learn what its diameter is, et cetera.
Approximate age, approximate age, the type of tree. And you can look up and down your street and see what other trees are there, and you actually go out and judge for yourself which ones are thriving, which ones aren't, and do quite a bit of information like that, sure.
I guess the treatment could also be indicated online. Is that...
Do you know that?
Yes.
So the trees in that Urban Tree Management Plan are every tree in the city, or just the ones in the right-of-way?
It is 50,000 data points. So it is, the right-of-way trees were the first priority, most of the park trees, and then some along the trails. We didn't get quite all of the trail areas identified in, like, for instance, Hickory Hill Park does not have every tree identified in, and only the fairly larger, significant ones. And when we say...
Why not?
Yeah, why not? Because that would be a project within itself. Significant trees mean it was over, I can't remember, it was six inches or eight inches. So smaller trees are in like the forested areas where there's a lot of volunteer trees that have grown up. Those are not all individually mapped on the tree inventory. So it's more of the deliberate planted trees throughout the city.
And you mentioned the size, and I seem to recall from the discussion before that there's a certain size of tree, a limitation as far as the injection. Are you looking at that?
Well, as far as, so smaller than six inches, your investment for treatment is probably the same as your investment to remove it and replace it. And your grow, you would get a new tree grown back just as quickly for those smaller, very small, small trees. The problem with the very large trees is that they don't grow nearly as fast, and there's not as much growth on them each year. So to get the chemicals kind of sucked up from the roots all the way up to the tree canopy is not as successful in the larger, the largest of large diameter trees. So we're still, as Ray Lynn said, we're still having, we're still going to try to treat those. It just may not be as successful in that case. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Julie?
Well, I'm, thank you for your presentation, and it, you know, I guess I would say better late than never. I, you know, I'm happy to see that the priorities that I think I had hoped be, you know, be, that the focus would be on those areas where you have high concentrations, and also the heritage, heritage ash are being included. So, you know, if we had started the treatment a little bit earlier, we might have been able to be more strategic. But at this point, it seems, let's, let's just treat what we can and work from there.
Thanks so much, Julie.
Thanks.
All right. We can move on to our next item, which is clarification of agenda items. So do any of you folks have agenda items you want to ask questions about?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Maz.
I want to talk about 8J.
8J?
Establishing of parking prohibit on, yeah. And we received some late handouts about it.
While you're looking at your late handouts, you do have a couple of letters from residents on Whale Street. This has been a, let's see, a difficult street maybe for our service departments for quite some time, and that's referenced or alluded to in some of the letters that you've, you've gotten where we've had to sit down with the neighborhood before and say, we're having some problems getting our service vehicles up and down, snowplows, trash, leaf, I imagine, just about anything. My understanding, it's a 24-foot street, and when you allow parking on both sides and you get those competing cars on either sides, that road can quickly shrink to below 10 feet pretty easily. And obviously, our, our service vehicles are going to struggle to navigate that. So it sounds like we're having some problems again. Candidly, I haven't had a chance to dive into all what those challenges are, but this request did come from internal, it's from our Public Works Department. And again, it's just a service issue. So we're recommending that we just move it over to parking to one side or the other. Obviously, you've got some residents that don't like that solution. You've all been here before. We've been here before as staff, and for us, the easier solution is just to put the parking on one side and move forward. We're happy to, if you'd like to hear details on the struggles that we're having, we'd report back to you. We can hold off on, on the parking prohibition and come back to you in detail what those challenges are, but it's as simple as getting service vehicles up and down the street.
There was some discussion about possibly a timing framework. Is that something you evaluated, and why would that or wouldn't that work?
You know, as you, as you move out from the core of downtown Iowa City, and even in the residential areas around downtown Iowa City, we don't do a whole lot of parking enforcement outside of the meters and the decks. It's just, it's just not something that we've done. We can do it on a complaint basis. So anytime you start putting regulations out far removed from the, from the downtown area, we don't have regular enforcement. We're not staffed for regular enforcement. Sure, we can do it. We have the capability, but staff's making special trips out there, and we're just not sure it's worth it at the end of the day for, for that. You know, the suggestions that they throw out, you know, alternating, I don't know exactly what they said, alternating streets or just on Trash Day, yeah, that's, I mean, is it doable? Yes. Is it the most efficient way to handle it? Probably not.
I guess, I think we can try it as experiment for a while, like restricted parking 13 times, especially on the recycling day, like the truck, for the truck to pick up. And if it's not working, we can, after that, do it. Because a lot of car park there, that means the people who live there really depend on this street to park their cars. And as electric supply and some of them, they don't have like garages and to park and all this, you know, apostical that they have. If we can try, as yesterday suggested, like 13 times and see, if it's still not working, we can tell them we tried.
Try. That's going to impact, you know, your Friday pickup day, but it's not going to help your snowplows and other...
That's what I was just going to say. I mean, we're getting into snow season, and so, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the city trucks have had luck or not luck going through there in terms of leaf removal, but certainly, you know, with snow removal coming, that's a problem. And it, I mean, it sounds like, the only thought I had was, it sounded like, you know, staff had reached out to them maybe years ago, and there was some good compliance, and now ownership maybe has turned over. And that's, was kind of what I was reading, in that they thought maybe if we tried it again with the new owners, that maybe we could get some compliance.
That's what one writer was saying, yeah.
So I guess, I mean, I'd be willing to at least give that a shot, but if that doesn't work in a fairly short time period, then I'm totally supportive of going to one side. But we can only spend city resources so much to try and solve little problems, so to speak. I mean, the inefficiency of city staff time becomes a big issue. But I guess I would be willing to say, hey, let's send notifications out and say, look, this is a concern. You know, if in 30 days, we're still seeing the same problems, then we're going to go ahead and do the no parking on one side of the street. I don't know how the rest of you...
That sounds like a reasonable thing to me to do if it's not a huge problem for the staff to take that step.
You know, Whale Street's been there for some of that.
So what do the rest of you think? We can pull that item and...
I mean, I was, I found it interesting that in one of the letters, there was a comment that staff in the past had urged the residents to avoid parking opposite one another. And that's basically what I'd been discussing before, was that's the issue, is when cars park opposite one another. But if you worked with the neighbors and came up with, you know, car placement which avoided that, that was acceptable to them, that could be signed just as parking on one side only, you know, where you identify the, you know, the parking bays as defined by that scheme, and...
But how is that any more efficient than just making it easier and having them park on one side? Because especially if you've already got a narrow street, it's a whole lot easier for your snowplows and your garbage trucks to get through if you've got parking on one side rather than alternating on opposite sides predetermined, and now they've got to weave in and out.
All I, my only, my feeling was, if both solve the problem for the city in terms of not having cars opposite one another, why not offer that option to the residents and let them decide? Would they, if they prefer it on one side only, that's fine. If they would rather have the weave and allow parking on both sides as, you know, in a controlled manner, that would be the alternative.
My experience would be that residents are okay with parking as long as it's not in front of their house. And I'm not saying about the course, you know, the correspondence that we got and then the preference of the individual writers, but having been through dozens and dozens of these in my career, it's, when you limit to one side or the other, it's typically the side that gets the parking, where they may have unfamiliar cars in front of their homes that don't like it.
We just saw that on the west side.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I really want to ask you, is like, if you park on, just for my own information, Larry, if you park in front of somebody else's house, that's illegal or what?
No, no, no.
Then, you know, I really, as long as they are not, people are not doing something illegal, I really don't care if the people at the house don't like the car in front of their house or not. This city for everyone, and the street is, everybody paying taxes here, and they can use the street.
Do we, do we actually know how many cars park on the street?
It wouldn't be difficult to find that out, you know, if you wanted us to come back in the spring.
Throughout the city?
No, just that one, one street. Because if they have garages and, and that type of stuff, and they're parking their car in the garage, so we may just be talking about maybe one or two cars that at times are, you know, opposite each other, cause an issue. And so if that is the situation, then maybe to avoid that, either we do what John has suggested, which I think, you know, you know, you give the residents maybe some, you know, some say, or we just switch it to a rotating parking, you know, Monday on this side, Tuesday on this side, something like that.
So I want to suggest that right now, we're doing basically staff work.
Sure.
And I don't think we need to be spending our time doing staff work. I personally do agree with what Maz brought up, and then what Susan recommended in terms of action, that we ask staff to reach out to the, to the residents, write them a letter, say, we're going to try this for a month, see how it goes, and if it doesn't work satisfactorily, we'll take the action indicated here.
Yes, and especially now we are in the snow season, and you might need the snow truck to go there, and we're going to have all the kind of experience, you know, like from, from trash pickup to snow removable and remover.
I really like what Susan's point was, is that I think that really what we're dealing with is, all of us at this table love resident input, and we always love empowering residents, so we all agree with that principle. Staff looks at it, rightfully so, from a technical efficiency standpoint. So I think Susan's sort of gives us the best of both worlds, as I understand it, is that it gives us sort of one last opportunity to sort of see how it goes.
Fix it yourself, or we'll fix it for you.
Yes. And then saying, hey, if that doesn't get done, then we really go to where staff, and then we'll monitor that very closely. And if there is situations where they can't get through with a snowplow, I'm for, you know, immediate action to just ensure, even though it's going to inconvenience the residents, to make sure that we get those streets plowed. So I think, I think you have a good balance there.
The only additional thing I would comment is, based on the letters, it sounds like there's people parking there whose houses do not face on that street. So in sending out those notifications, taking that into consideration that those whose houses back up or driveways back up to that street are also noticed.
Yep. So part of what I'm hearing is that we should pull item 8J?
We don't need to pull it because it's just correspondence.
Oh, right.
Yeah, you have to pull it.
That's right.
Because if you adopt it, that'll happen.
So, okay, it's on the agenda.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. It's a prohibition, right? I'm sorry, I was thinking it was just a letter from the residents.
Just pull it and defer it.
Okay.
For separate consideration, or just, yeah, okay.
Yes. Pull it and defer it, she said?
Other questions about the agenda?
No.
I just wanted to make a comment about 8A, the letter from Carol DePrest. It's always very nice to get positive letters, so I would like to thank her for that, and goes along with our discussion earlier with Julie and the planting of the trees. So it is much better to see new trees planted than to have them removed. So I appreciate that positive letter from Carol.
Can I comment quickly on 8D, Jim, very quickly? The Iowa City Deer Management?
Sure.
This is totally anecdotal, anecdotal, but I am seeing deer all over the place, in places that I've never seen them before, like a buck in my backyard. Never seen that. I've been here for 20 years, so tough decision that we previously made, but I, it is really becoming urgent. And I'm seeing them on Court Street. I'm seeing them on Lucas, Governor, all over the place, so.
I used to see them only at night. I, these days, I see them in the, like, daytime.
We're deer city now, pretty much, so.
But we're not going to be able to take any action this winter, right?
We still may. Yeah, we're going to go to the DNR. We have to, you know, the state has to authorize it, and we're set to go to the DNR in December to ask for that authorization. Again, remember, we went late spring last year, and they said, you're not quite ready. Go back and get some more resident input and refine your plan, put together your committee and come back. And we've done all that. It's by no means a slam dunk that they're going to give us this permit. We're the only community in Iowa that sharpshoots, and they have a lot of questions, and there's some skepticism among their, their authorizing committee about the sharpshooting technique. So we're going to give it our best because that's what the community has, has really asked for in, in large part here. But you may find yourselves in December or January faced with a question of, do you want to bow hunt or find other measures to reduce the deer population?
They're listening to us. To me, it's only a matter of time before we, I mean, in town, a deer-on-car collision and someone gets hurt. So if you're listening, hopefully they'll take into consideration.
We'll give it our best. Get back to you soon.
I'd like to ask a question about item 7E, which is a resolution authorizing to proceed with construction of the Burlington-Madison intersection project. So Ron or Jason, I don't know which one, I wonder if you could give us a sense of what that project involves, but I also understand that there might be reason for the project to be delayed or not done, even if we, at this moment, would like to proceed?
Yeah. You want...
All right. So we'll handle this kind of by committee. I'll handle the possible delay of the project. This isn't going to stay. So I'll just talk a little louder. So we had initially looked at including the Burlington Street Bridge as part of a federal funding application that the state is putting together. We actually were notified probably in the last week or two that that's actually not going to be a good fit for that, for that program. So that's been removed from that application, so I think that hurdle to the project has been removed. So not that we won't have to do something with the Burlington Street Bridge here in the not-too-distant future, but it looks like it won't be part of that program. So I don't think that will have an impact on this project at this point.
Okay, good.
And then I'll bring Jason Reichardt up here to talk about the project specifically. He's a product engineer for the project.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, I'm Jason Reichardt, civil engineer, Public Works. So brief overview, we're looking at widening Burlington Street essentially from Madison to Front Street or to the Burlington Street Bridge, and adding bike lanes as well as kind of re-striping. We have some utility work and stuff on Burlington, too. And on Madison Street, we're looking at a road diet, essentially a four-to-three lane conversion from, I believe, Market Street down to Prentice Street, so. And included in that will be traffic signal improvements on Burlington-Madison intersection as well as Capitol Street intersection and ADA improvements as well.
Okay, great. That's what is in the written material. We had an opportunity to read, and I was most concerned about what Jason back there just addressed. So it sounds like we're on track to do something we've been wanting to do for some time now, right?
Yep.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 8H in the correspondence, the letter from Martha Norbeck. I just want to make a few comments on that. I'd like to thank her for her comments. a few comments on that. Uh, I'd like to thank her for her comments. Um, and I think I'd met, brought this up before with, um, developers. I think we in, in the city have, we spent a lot of time and had a committee and developed a very aggressive climate action plan. So I think, uh, a lot of her points ring, uh, true to home, that, uh, developers need to be aware of that and conscious of that, and, um, kind of go above and beyond even when they're developing, and, and looking at ways that, uh, can be, uh, energy efficient in their developers. So I, I think they, they need to take note of this also, and, and be aware of that, and do what they can to help us out with our climate action plan.
At some point, we may need to be considering, if, if it's permissible according to state law, we may need to be considering more stringent energy-efficient standards for new building construction. That would be completely consistent with our climate action plan. I, I don't know, Ashley, I don't know if our, the committee that helped us as a steering committee now reformulated itself.
Yes.
I don't know if they've been addressing this or not.
Um, I'll have to forgive me about, um, not remembering the exact topic. I know that there is a group that's being put together by the advisory board that are meeting, uh, I think in early December, or next week, actually, I think, um, regarding certain standards within the development community. So bringing people on board to discuss those types of issues. Um, as far as, uh, adopting more stringent energy codes, we just need to determine what, what is permissible by, by our state legislation, uh, whether we can enforce a code that is more, is more strict than, than what the state's adopted.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, I think, I think it's probably more likely that we'll be on the defense on this issue, um, with our state legislature. Going forward, there has been talk, although not serious movement, in the past couple of years about limiting cities' ability to adopt the most, um, recent version of the energy code. So actually to restrict us from adopting the standard codes.
Well, that's pretty goofy. Why would they do that?
That would push it. I don't know. Um, but there has been talk, and it, and who knows, it may come up again, it may not. Um, but, just to let you know that we may find ourselves in that position, and, and not to dissuade us from looking at it, it's in our plan, we should look at it. But you'll, at the, at the appropriate time, have to weigh the, the political risk of pushing the envelope on some of those measures, and perhaps seeing some state pushback. Um, as Ashley said, we're not quite there yet, but that'll be something you all will have to weigh when the time comes.
One super brief comment relating to what Jeff just said. Um, we are getting the 50th year anniversary of Home Roll, so I do find it irony that it seems like we're going in one direction when 50 years ago, we did a pretty good job of getting it right. So that's my last editorial.
Okay, done with that. Any other questions about the agenda?
Um, going back to 7E, I have a quick question about the timeline and whether, um, it would occur at the same time during the Clinton and Burlington intersection. Just to make sure.
No, Gustav, Clinton and Burlington's already being done, right?
Right.
And then we've had trouble with the contractor finishing the work. So.
So it should be done.
So, yeah, there's just a little bit left to do at the intersection itself, and then the restriping has to be done on Clinton Street. So we're way ahead on that, except the contractor's not completing the work. So.
We're, yeah, we're at a stage now where we're looking at, uh, completing sidewalk temporarily to kind of button things up for the winter, and then the spring, coming back and finishing the sidewalk work. And hopefully, uh, over the winter, we can get the, uh, the traffic signalization completed. So when we do come back in the spring, we only have the striping and the, um, the sidewalk work to go, or to complete. Um, for the Burlington-Madison project, we're looking at a, a spring, April, um, letting for that project. So we should be, we should be wrapped up before we start construction of Burlington-Madison, so.
Good deal.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Any other agenda items? Okay, if not, let's move to the info packet, November the 8th.
I want to, IP 3, um, thank Jeff for that article. There were, there were a number of things in here that were, um, I think if people take the time, and I don't just mean council, I just mean the public, to really read this. I, um, some things I think most of us don't necessarily think about, but some of the comments in there, and I'm going to quote a couple of things, that construction cost alone situates brand-new housing outside the budget of lower-income households. Um, just how much new construction actually costs, and especially, uh, when you start factoring in the land prices. And, um, they talked about luxury housing and the fact that, you know, luxury house versus luxury location. And, you know, those luxury locations are basically due to scarcity of housing in locations where people really want to live. And so, you know, for us, that's, that's really downtown. I mean, that's one of the things that's driven up, you know, I think land prices near the university, is, you know, the high demand for, for housing in those areas. Um, they had an interesting chart in there also, um, in terms of basically seeing an inverse relationship between your vacancy rates and your rental increases. So as your vacancy rates go up, the rate of rental increases slows down, or goes, or they actually go in the opposite direction. And then just a couple of the other things, you know, talking about how zoning limits can, can drive up costs of housing and various other regulations. So, you know, again, I think when we talk about stricter energy regulations, we have to look at that also in the context of what does that do to housing costs overall? Certainly, it can lower the, the, um, utility costs for residents, which can be huge, but just kind of thinking about all those things, how they interact with each other. And the other thing that was interesting was how, for so many places, it's hard to build that missing middle. And, you know, what the Form-based Code that we're ultimately going to have in a couple more locations in the community will really help us with that, so.
Yeah, I sure hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and I just want to, you know, kudos to John, because you're the one that's really brought that whole missing middle concept to us, and I think that's been a real positive thing.
Yeah, it has, it has great potential, and I think this article, which, I'd also just want to add that, I don't know how often we've, either the council or, or Jeff have included, I, I, articles on the Strong Towns website, but it's an outstanding source of information. I look at it every day, and have for probably five years. So it's, um, it's a really great source. This was a really great article. Um, but yeah, the missing middle, you know, the, which would include accessory units. You know, when we look at, um, where we can develop, you know, there are, most of Iowa City is sort of off limits. Um, and what, you know, the ADU movement nationwide is opening up single-family zones to accessory units. ADU? Accessory dw, uh. Oh, thanks.
Accessory dwelling units?
Dwelling unit.
Granny flats.
Granny flats, yeah. So, you know, if you, if you think about how, in terms of supply, this whole issue of supply, if you open up the single-family zones to second units, um, it would have a phenomenal effect on the, the supply side.
Along those lines, John, there already are a lot of locations, um, in the city of Iowa City where you can do the accessory dwelling units. So I think part of our policy role is not only to identify new policies, but also to daylight, um, existing opportunities. And I think I really encourage people that are thinking of adding a unit for a family loved one, or for rental income, to determine whether it's already possible. Um, one person I would mention would be Martha Norbeck, built one for her mother, and it's just a fantastic, environmentally sustainable, um, unit, and it is an ADU. So it's good to know about that as well.
There's another point about the IP number three. The title of it is why are developers only building luxury housing? But, and I think it does raise all sorts of valuable questions and insight, provide insight into the complexity of this housing challenge. But it also recommends building at the next increment, that the, the, the housing ma, or the building mass and height and scale and all that should be at the next increment. So if you're talking about something in a single-family detached housing neighborhood, well, the next increment is duplexes, maybe fourplexes, maybe some of the, the lower-end missing middle kinds of things. Uh, and then in, in a more dense area, the next increment is maybe six and seven or whatever story buildings, and so on. So that, that's a part of it as well. It's kind of like not going beyond what you really need, you know, kind of, kind of get out in front, but don't go way beyond what you really need. Anyhow, I, I don't want to belabor that point. I think it is a very interesting article.
Oh.
I want to talk about.
Go ahead, Maz, sorry.
Oh. I guess, I, I don't remember which IB is your letter.
Sorry?
The, the letter that you sent it to us, the memo?
That's November 15th.
It's on the 15th.
On the 15th?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all right.
She got bad information from someone next to her.
Well, you can bring it up then when we get to that.
Yeah.
On IP 4, the census jobs, is the city going to be doing anything to promote that opportunity and, and help, I don't know if we help people, train people or anything like that, or how that works?
Well, we're working right now to establish a, I guess, a community awareness campaign. So, um, one way we started, the, there's a group of staff, Kelly was included, our communications staff was included, Stephanie Bowers. We, we sat down to assess how many community groups we could pull together, uh, to start creating this complete count committee. So essentially, reaching out to our, uh, community influencers to try and get everybody on board so that we have a channel of information to push, to push census information out and start preparing the public to, um, take part in, in this important process. So we do have materials coming in from the Census Bureau, so our regional office will continue to send materials. Um, today, I just sent a follow-up email to our small groups of community organizations that met with us for an initial meeting. Um, so one of the job flyers was in Spanish. I, I included those, so people can post them. Um, I know that the city's done at least one communication about some of the census jobs. Um, and then the plan is to get another meeting together, either sometime in December or early in the year, and just invite the general public, along with our community organizations, to really start pulling people together and figuring out how exactly we'll, we'll continue to share information and educate the public on, on how to, um, take part, why it's important.
Mm-hmm. Well, because when I was reading this, it looks like it, it's going to be all online this time?
It's, it won't be all online, so the, the, so people can participate either through paper form, online response, or by telephone. So.
Okay.
They're adding this online internet component that.
Okay.
You know, people can probably respond on their smartphones and tablets and things. Um, we don't know what that, exactly what that looks like yet. So that's unknown that the Census Bureau is facing, and they communicated that it'll be new. So it, there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Long's are on top of it. I just want to, yep, do the best we can to get everybody counted.
This topic was discussed at the National League of Cities meeting I went to in Los Angeles a week or so ago. And one of the, um, subtopics that came up had to do with students, you know, because electronic outreach to students who are leaving. And, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of this that's going to take place in May of 2020.
Yes.
Is that right? And, and so there's some concern that students will be in the process of moving out of Iowa City at that key moment, and, and so on. So I, I don't have any details to fill in here, but it became a topic of conversation out there.
Yeah, we reached out to the housing, um, the student housing group. Uh, I hadn't heard a response back from, from the people we contacted, but, uh, we'll continue to push and, and try and get engagement from the university. I figured the housing.
In the past, the uni, yeah, in the past, the university has been very much engaged, particularly with students in the dorms, um, I think, and even with communication with off-campus students, because they understand how important this is to get all the students counted, because it impacts the money that we get as a city. So they've been, I know in, in 2010, they were very much engaged in it, so.
Other items on the November, what is that, 8th? No, 10th, what is it?
On the IP 5, um, are we going to do just one meeting in March then? Because the 19th was spring break.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I think that's what we agreed to last time, isn't it?
I just kind of split the difference, and then it's not more than two weeks without a meeting, and it's not back-to-back meetings.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that, that's fine. I, I just want to confirm that we're all comfortable with that. I mean, just with what we have on the agenda and stuff, that's fine with me.
Yeah, well, it looked fine to me, though pretty ambitious stretching it out to December, but, you know, way to get ahead of the game.
Just on top of it.
Oh, yeah.
What can I add?
Uh, I'd like to mention IP number 7, the bar check report. And, you know, I, I sometimes like to think about this statistically. So I wonder if, uh, somebody on staff could present us with, uh, graphs that show the trends in, what's it, the running trends in previous 12 months under 21 and Paula citation ratios for each of those major establishments.
Don't they look like they're getting worse?
Well, I think they are, but I, I'm not tracking it physically, you know, so I don't know for sure. But then if we could get another, have our update contain that trend, then we know if some businesses are getting better and others are getting worse, and, and then the, the whole, um, bar check report would make a lot more sense from our point of view, I think.
Isn't there a certain point where they would lose their liquor license for a little bit, if they had so many citations?
No, it's, uh, there's, uh, some exemption certificates that they could lose if they have those, or it could prevent them from applying for an exemption to our 21 ordinance.
In the past, I know some people have been, you know, without their liquor license for a period of time.
They're typically related to sale to underage, uh, where we actually send in underage buyers, and they, they sell usually multiple times within a period. They can lose their liquor license, that's a state decision. Um, uh, but these were, we're actually citing the bar patrons. That, that only reflects negatively on the bar for our local ordinance, which is our under 21. And again, only a handful of bars have those exemptions to start with. So a lot of the problem ones that you see, or the, the ones with the highest scores, may not have those exemption certificates, so it really doesn't impact them at all.
A number of years ago, we, um, tried to tie the Paula rate to the liquor license so that it could have a ramification on the actual liquor license and the state. We were challenged, and the state said we couldn't do that.
I know there was some work done related to this involving the state agency, and Simon, you and I have sat on many of those conversations.
Yeah, the Alcohol and Beverages Division has spent the last year reaching out to cities and various stakeholders about whether, uh, the state could put more teeth into the good moral character provision for when we can revoke a liquor license. Uh, so we're optimistic that that'll be taken up this next legislative session, but, um, we're remaining engaged in that, and hopefully we'll see some movement there.
Brevity, it's a good thing. Thanks. I want to mention IP 13, which is minutes of the October 22nd meeting of the Telecommunications Commission. I don't want to elaborate on it, but the, the main thing I noticed is that they talked a lot about precisely what we talked about the last meeting, about trying to figure out what their role should be. So that's great. Anything else on that packet? Okay, how about November 15?
Yeah, which IB is your letter?
IP 4.
Or I couldn't even open my computer, and I don't have my eye glasses today. I'm struggling with my reading glasses. Okay, I just would like you to, if you can summarize your letter.
Can you use the microphone?
Yeah. Would like you to summarize your letter, just to tell us exactly what you mean by all this. And why you decided to put that letter out.
Uh, well, summarize it, yeah. Well, in brief, I think the, the proposed project needs to be scaled down and phased in over time. And I think there are a variety of risks associated with the full bore, four-building, 15-story project. Uh, and so what I really wanted to do was detail why I did not support moving ahead with four 15-story buildings in our last meeting. I just want to make it clear why I thought it was a bad idea. And beyond that, let's, I don't know, there, you know, there are like six reasons why I think there are risks associated with moving ahead, uh, with the four-building 15-story thing. Uh, but so I can go through each of them if you want to.
Yes, please.
All right. Uh, I think there's six cre, six key reasons why I believe it needs to be scaled down and phased in over time. overtime. All right. So, one is that with the maximum bonuses, the project will far exceed what the master plan, which was developed with extensive public participation and support, anticipated for the site. That's the first thing. The second is, we have already, and there's a typo, we have already approved a massive upzoning, which permits the owner to at least quintuple, five times, the number of beds on the site from roughly 200 to roughly 1,000. So, that's a huge upzoning. Third, there's no need to overreach. Upzoning coupled with modest bonuses would still yield very large increases in the tax base and property tax revenues for the city. Fourth, an increase in site-specific property tax revenues might be substantially offset by decreases elsewhere, so we need to be thinking in terms of net property tax revenue over time. And there are particular reasons why I say that, but I'm drawing on information we have obtained from people that's been submitted to us. Fifth, the key risk, I think, for the developer and for the city are the possibility of, one, declining enrollments at the university, and, two, a University of Iowa policy decision to require second-year students to live on campus. I'm not saying they're going to do that, but we do know they're considering it, we do know that they're going to start a trial effort involving some movement in that direction. And last, the upzoning we already approved will, when coupled with modest height bonuses, substantially increase the supply of affordable housing. So, it's not an either-or, there's, you know, gradation in between. So, those are the, in brief, as brief as I can get at the main things I had in mind. I did not put it in the packet in order to create a big conversation at this moment about it, but I wanted to be clear as I could in writing about why I thought the 15-story four-building idea would not be a good thing to proceed with as stipulated.
Yeah, I guess, you know, you mean like, all this, you know, thing that you mentioned, it could make the, you know, the thing that's really grabbed my attention, it could make this project like fall off or something like that. But, like, my understanding is, those people will borrow money from the bank, I guess, for this project. Usually, those people who give out money, and even the developer themselves, or the people who own this, they don't do something like risk analysis or something like that? Do you think like the bank will give all this money without doing like a risk analysis or something like that for their money, to make sure that they will get this money back? I don't know, and I would like really to know, maybe from the city manager, or from you, or from whoever, even if this project fall off or anything, what effect that have on the city, like on us?
Well, let me present a really, a hypothetical negative scenario. I'm not saying this is going to happen, but it's possible, at least. They build the five, the four 15-story buildings, and enrollment's decline, or the university decides to put all of its second-year students into living on campus, then the demand for off-campus student housing will go way down. Occupancy rates in that cluster of buildings will probably drop, or if not in that cluster of buildings, then a bunch of others. And we'll have buildings that are underutilized. And then, what landlords, people who own apartment complexes have told us is that they believe their properties will be devalued in that kind of scenario, and therefore, our property tax revenues would change in ways that we don't really like. So, I'm not saying that literally will happen, but I think it's possible, and I know that there are other people out in this community who are really worried about this, because I've talked to them.
I guess the better the banks should worry too, and don't give money for this project, so the project is not going to go ahead. You know, I just feel like there is people who are really specialized on doing this kind of analysis, just like that's my understanding. I really don't know a lot about this area, but, you know, just like, think about it, you know, if this, the developer is not building this like from his own pocket money. Of course, he, or some, you know, some of it, I mean, I mean, like, not the whole thing, at least. Usually, I see that they go to the bank and get some money, and they put some money, and all this kind of things. That's why, you know, you come with this risk ID, you know, like, really, there is some risk, that what you see. Also, the bank should see the same thing, and the other people who are, the developers should see the same thing that you're seeing. And I guess things that it should be like, really, risk analysis has been done somehow for this project. And if the bank want move forward with this project, that means they already put all this kind of thing in consideration, that's why they give out the money, or they will give out the money. Anyway, I'm really, you know, I'm still comfortable about my position, but I guess would like to know, you know, the city should have like, figure out a process to determine, you know, the developer risk, that if it could happen, what was the risk to the city? Are we affected by anything? That, my question was, because of this. Otherwise, I'm really still comfortable about my position.
Well, it could be we have another opportunity in the future to talk about this. In relation to everything else, whatever the majority of the council wants to do is what we're going to do.
I understand, but you know, we just want to make feel, I, when you say there is risk, that's what grabbed my attention, of course, and I would like to know, is this something, are we doing something risk to us as a city? Are the, you know, I just want to like make sure where I'm voting, I'm voting right, you know? I don't want to.
Yeah, reasonable.
That's why I ask this question. But thank you.
I do have questions about the master plan, which you've noted, the project will far exceed what the master plan is, and I guess I'm confused by that, only because I thought that the master plan that we saw, and that location, there could be 15 stories, according to the, well, that's the code.
Form-based code.
Form-based code. So, how, are, so, I guess I'm a little confused by, by the statement about the project far exceeds the master plan.
It's my understanding the master plan called for buildings that would be four to seven stories in height for that site, but it didn't say that's what it must be. And it also said height bonuses could be permitted, it could, and that was a part of the plan. And the implementing component, or the, what was supposed to be implementing the plan is the form-based code. So, what's, what's being proposed in terms of 15 stories is consistent with the form-based code, but I believe it's far, it far exceeds what the master plan itself originally contemplated for that area.
Well, the form-based code was developed after the master plan, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just trying to get clarification there. I don't know that I have anything else right now.
I guess really, my understanding, the master plan is, for riverfront crossing, you can't build high on the corners, that my understanding, I don't know correctly if I'm wrong.
That's correct, the master plan does, did state up to 15 stories, I believe, on the corner, the very, two very specific corners.
And Jeff, you're going to be coming with a report here pretty soon with your negotiations, and so, we'll have an opportunity for another work session on this, correct?
Well, yeah, if we want to transition into that, it's kind of related to this item, but probably more your pending work session. List, the applicant, or the developer, I should say, submitted a, what I would call kind of a pre-height bonus application. It's fairly lengthy in size, it's about 50, 60 pages, and I think it does a good job of showing their intent, but it by no means meets the requirements that we would look for in a, a design review application. So, there's no renderings, there's no floor plans, but there is certainly advancement in their, in their thought on building placement, on how to satisfy affordable housing, a number of the things that you all have really focused on in your initial discussion. So, at this point, it's, I think it's in a, I don't know that, and there needs to be a lot of back and forth with the staff and the developer on this, I think it's ready to come back to you and help you formulate, or help you kind of finish your discussion. Ultimately, what the developer wants is some type of, I can't say commitment from council, because it's a work session, you're not voting, you're not giving them that height bonus, but some sort of head nod from you at a work session that said, if this is your intent, and you can execute this intent in your design, then the majority of council will support it, because they're, they're looking at probably a few hundred thousand dollars in design costs to be able to get to the point where they can meet that, that application, you know, the level of detail that we would require. So, understandably, they're a little skittish right now, because they don't know where the majority of the council will fall. So, what I would like to do is schedule a work session in December, either December 4th or 18th, the developer would prefer the 4th. We already have our solar consultant coming from Nebraska to meet with you on that, on that evening. If you'd like to do both, we can, their, their application would be in your next, not tomorrow's info packet, but, but next week's info packet. And again, I think it would help you maybe get to that point where you can give them that assurance, or at least you could say, you're not quite there yet, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and that, then hopefully, they have the confidence to invest in the design work, to actually put together an application that would then go through staff to P and Z to you for final approval.
That sounds like a reasonable step to make, but I want to toss out a fact that may have a bearing on this. I doubt that I'll be here on the 18th.
It'd be good to have a full council for this discussion.
Yeah, and I want to be present for that.
So, the 4th, if we, if we started at 4 o'clock?
I was going to say, we got to do the 4. At least, that's my preference.
And I'm not sure which order we'll go, we'll talk with the consultants to see if they can maybe start at 4 and give them, give them an hour, so that they wrapped up by 5, and that'll give you an hour or so for this.
Any objection to that, folks? 4 o'clock on the 4th?
4 o'clock, okay.
If for some reason the consultant can't get there at 4, we'll do 12 court first. We'll have to put a hard end to it, so that, I assume the consultants may be having to travel back to Omaha or wherever they're from.
Okay. All right, other items on that, was it the 15th, November 15th info packet?
With IP5, nice to see the letter on the lead city, that we've achieved that.
Is staff planning to issue a local press release pertaining to that?
Certainly can, I'm not sure if it's in the works or not, but we can.
Yeah, we can. This is the notification, essentially, that we are at a high level of STAR achievement. They've integrated the STAR program, you know, that we've worked very hard to achieve, into the lead for cities and communities. So, it's kind of building on that U.S. Green Building Council program, and then, this is just, it's notifying us that we're part of that.
We started with STAR, what, about five or six years ago, or?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
We're working on re-certification.
Right, okay.
At this point.
No, I would agree, Jim, I think it's good to do some sort of public release of accomplishments.
Crowe that thing every now and then, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other items?
Just like to mention, if you haven't got through them, while we did, give you an update from NDS on the Affordable Housing Action Plan. This is the original plan, we're still getting to a few of those remaining items, and we think we'll be able to check those off the list sometime in early 19. And then, of course, as part of your new strategic plan, we're, we're kind of contemplating some, some different strategies to present to you in 19 as well.
Checked off a lot.
That's good. I was glad to see that, the IP numbers, sorry, IP number 7, I was glad to see that the First Unitarian Church was approved for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Yeah. Anything else on the November 15th packet? If not, let's go to council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with John, move to the left.
Well, one thing I'll mention was, at our most recent ICAD meeting, there was a presentation by the new president of Kirkwood Community College, which led to, I think it was Mark Nolte asked us, so what are your thoughts about the potential closing of, and I don't have my notes in front of me here, the, the small college in southeast Iowa?
Wesleyan.
Wesleyan. Which then led to just a more general conversation about the, there's a bit of a squeeze, you know, in higher education in terms of the supply and the demand, and what that might mean at various levels, really. So, it was kind of a sobering conversation, because I think the Midwest, I mean, coming from outside the Midwest, I have always really been very, very enamored with the small colleges of the Midwest. I think they're a wonderful expression of Midwestern culture, so think, and I think some of the most charming places in Iowa are the small towns that have the small colleges. So, there is this threat there now, that, you know, there's an extraordinary amount of competition in higher education to, to attract students to their institution. And I think, I, my feeling is it's, it is happening at the larger schools, as well as the smaller schools. So, it was, it was just an interesting conversation, having started with Kirkwood, and then leading to a more general conversation.
Rockney?
I don't have a ton of news for the City of Literature, we're meeting again on November 27th, and so, I anticipate for our next meeting, I'll have more of an update in terms of the game plan for the spring, and in particular, how to apply for the one-book, two-book, if you've got some student writers out there, keep an eye out for that, but I don't have a ton of details right now.
Maz?
Yeah, coming this way? Okay. What I have to report, I went to Kirkwood Community College and presented to the students, it was great, and I guess we attend the student government meeting, when it was that? I don't even remember. And they passed a resolution for the access center, I guess you sent us copy of that, I was there, and also, you know, they passed a resolution to support the labor center, which was great. I guess like, to me, it was interesting seeing the student, for me, this format and this setting, I never saw it before, like, even in my country, we don't have that, it was really interesting to see like, young leaders are doing like government stuff, and a lot, students who are passionate to be, you know, a leader one day. And I think that's all, I don't remember. Yeah.
All right. On Sunday, the 11th, I was able to go to the Engler, and see, it was a play called The Absolute Brightness, and there was, it was quite interesting, because it was only one actor, and it was very, very entertaining, but, because he was an excellent actor, but the message was hated against LGBT, was the underlying message, and it was about the Trevor Project, which essentially was an individual that was killed because they were a person within the LGBTQ community. I did have a chance to do a meeting with Frederick Newell at the Dream Center on Tuesday, on Monday, I'm sorry, the 12th, and that was very encouraging. And I go back to when you all went to Out of Town, how you all saw that, I forget the name of the project.
Youth First.
Youth First Project, and so, yeah, I, the Dream Center does some great things, and I was happy to learn a little more about what they do. On Tuesday, 13th, I went to the Johnson County Livable Community Transportation Committee meeting, and there, I did bring up, you know, the concern that Maz brought up about. meeting, and there I did bring up, you know, the concern that Maz brought up about bringing transportation in the interim to our community, and seeing if they had any interest in submitting something for the council to consider. They do not, that's not a part of what their role is. It really is a committee that just, different entities come together and just report what they're doing. And so they're not, they're not the committee to submit anything to the council for recommendations. I did attend Iowa City Employee Appreciation at Terry Trueblood, and that was great to see so many people. I'm not even sure how many actually attended, do we know?
We had about 260 or 70 employees, which is a good number for us.
Oh, it was awesome. So, yeah, I thought it was a great day, a great event, and I appreciated that. Other than that, I did attend yesterday on Monday, the 19th, Johnson County Task Force on Aging, and there they did a presentation essentially on preventing fraud specifically for elderly people, so they gave some pointers for elderly people. And I kind of had a full week. I met with six people within our community, or past two weeks, six people within the community, just to listen to their concerns, and I'm learning to listen.
I think you already know how to listen.
I had the great opportunity to attend the Invest Health convening in Atlanta, along with Tracy. It's always a pleasure to meet and talk with groups of people from cities all across the country and realize that we're not alone in our struggles to have a healthy, livable, sustainable community. But one thing that's always stuck out for me is the number of cities, and Tracy, maybe you can relate to this too, that are concerned with areas of food desert in their communities. And so I've always been very thankful that this doesn't seem to be an issue in our community. We've got grocery stores all over the place, and we, and our food markets and farmers markets, so that's always very positive to hear that. But I was very proud of our city because Tracy was one of several panel members, and she talked about our Affordable Housing Action Plan, our, the Guide to Healthy Homes handouts that she was helpful in designing, and our, actually our Equity Toolkit. And after, after the panel discussion, several members, quite a few members of the audience asked for copies of all of these things. So that really puffed me up, made me proud that our city has done a lot, and these other cities are taking, taking notice of that. And I'm going to tell a story, Tracy. I told her not to tell this because I was a little bit embarrassed by it, but the more I've thought about it, I think that Tracy deserves to be recognized for what she did. A group of us afterwards had decided we were going to out to eat Missoula, and I think it was Eau Claire maybe, and a steak restaurant was recommended us to, so once we got seated and we were eating, and I literally bit off more than I could chew, and I started choking. And it was, it was very scary, very scary situation, and a table of like 10 people, and nobody, they knew what to do. Somebody ran to get the waitress, but of course she was this young thing, she didn't know what to do. But Tracy sprung into action, and she was seated next to me, so I stood up and she got behind me, did the Heimlich, and out came that piece of steak. So I'll forever be thankful to Tracy for doing that. Thank you.
Susan?
Meeting, meetings for the access center continue to go well. We have on our agenda tonight, the, finally, the first reading for the rezoning. We've got all the signatures of all the various owners, plus the county, so we get that done. Lot of subcommittees that are meeting in terms of the governance structure, and the building, and the land, and getting the architect moving on some things. If we agree to condense our second and third readings at the December 4th meeting, then the county will close on the property as originally scheduled on December 14th. So assuming that we don't have any controversy and can agree to that, they would be really excited to do that. They plan to start moving dirt as soon as feasibly possible, depending upon winter weather. Have to bring dirt in to raise that site, so we get out of the 500-year floodplain for where the building is going to be. But just lots of things going on between, Eleanor's probably having some discussions too with some of the governance stuff, and we've got to get the 208E agreement done, but it's moving forward. I would say the people who've been involved in those committees for the last two-plus years, you can just kind of see the excitement just starting to grow a little bit as people start realizing this thing's actually going to happen. So still got a ways to go, but we're seeing some significant progress.
So there's always a few mere legal technicalities that have to go through.
Yeah, it's like when I came to meet with Jeff and Eleanor and a couple reps from the PD, and I was like, well, yeah, there's like these three different things probably that we need to have for the 208E, and by the time Eleanor gets done, the list is like this long. You know? Just that difference from what a layperson thinks of in terms of those technicalities and what the experts know needs to be involved. So, yeah, we'll get there, but people are really excited.
We're very lucky to have a really outstanding city attorney.
We are.
I'm going to mention just...
And staff.
Oh, sorry.
And full staff. She's got good people.
Absolutely. So I'm just mentioning, I'm just going to mention two things very briefly. The Convention and Visitors Bureau Board met on the 15th of November. Not much happened, period. Also, I need to reach out to Tanya Vilhauer, maybe Simon, you can help me with this, to see, try to figure out when we're going to meet next. And I think we need an update about the fraternity's suspensions and how that's playing out. I feel pretty ignorant about it at the moment. Yeah, that's it for me. Anything else? Okay, we're done with the work session for tonight.